Please call the roll.
Bird.
Here.
Henson.
Here.
Ho ho Kelly.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Elsa Beck. Williamson.
Here.
Instrom.
Here.
Item number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
There are none.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Henson.
Yes.
Ho ho Kelly.
Yes.
Mormon.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Instrom.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Okay, item number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, annual tax increment financing report with Maggie Berger.
Thank you. So I was actually at the end, my apologies. Good evening, everyone. I'm Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. Thank you for having me this evening. You have some colorful sheets in front of you that start with a red sheets. They're colored red, and this is your tax increment financing and debt reports. So I'll just walk through it very quickly here for you. Our first red pages outline the general obligation debt that the city has outstanding. As you can see, you have a 2015 debt outstanding, a 2020 GO bond that was outstanding. The bonds, we tell you how much was issued in that header column. We tell you what the issue date was. The TIC is the true interest cost. So fortunately, you sold bonds when there were very low interest rates. We have higher interest rates now, but we started to see them trickle down. And again, there are tax exempt bonds that you sell for certain things. So our tax exempt rates right now are probably in the upper 3% lower 4% rate, which is better than what you and I can go and borrow at the bank for our own mortgages, our own cars, things like that, because you are a public agency. So that is still the case, that there are some, you know, low interest rates in comparison to what the public interest rates are. We give you your total principal, your total principal and interest. And on page two of our red section, you outline the different ways that the city is using different sets of dollars to pay this debt back. So you're using some TIF, the reason that that's in yellow, that coincides with the yellow part of your report. You're using some sewer revenue debt, some storm water revenue, some water revenue, and then one of the bonds, you're using some road use tax. You have a debt service levy in 2025. At this point in time, you do not have a debt service levy in 2026, based on the debt that is outstanding. But that is where we were talking about bringing in additional projects over this next year, so that you would be able to levy a debt service levy if it was necessary going into 2026. We go on to our orange pages, and this is where we've outlined any revenue debt that the city has outstanding. So we've got a mixture of water revenue and sewer revenue debt on this first page. The second page, we, most of your water and revenue debt is out there at 2% or 2.43% and lower interest rates. That's a very good rate. Most of that debt, all but one, is a state revolving fund or SRF debt, so that's a subsidized program. And so their newest ones were the 2024A and the 2024B, both the water and sewer debt that you've recently let pays on projects for. On page two of the orange sheets, we give you the total principal, the total principal and interest of that water and sewer debt, and then we show you the different ways that you're paying that debt. The biggest takeaway is the last column is zeros. You cannot levy any property taxes for revenue-based debt identified would be paid back with the revenues. You've entered into bond resolution with that state. You will raise rates if necessary to not only pay the operations of the system, but also to make the debt payments. You are using a small amount of TIF, I believe, on some sewer debt, because there were some expansions years ago of your sewer plan, to bring in some economic development and to further your growth in your community. So we do use a little TIF revenue for that debt as well. We go on, and we look now at our yellow pages. These yellow pages are set to outline the current debt that is being paid with TIF revenues. So again, part of that 2020 bond from our red pages is being paid with TIF revenues, and part of that was the refunding of the 2011 bond. And so that is the portion that we're paying back with some TIF receipts. And then there in the center, we're paying part of the sewer revenue bond from the, from your two different TIF districts, I should say. So we've got two different TIF districts outlined there as to those are paying back part of those sewer revenue bonds that were done in 2021. The purple column is what we'll get to next, but that purple column outlines any rebate agreements that the city has outstanding, as well as any low to moderate income set aside requirements. The far column, where we've drawn the arrow to fiscal year 26, this talks about how many dollars they're actually asking for out of your TIF districts combined. This $916,000 is to cover all of your obligations, whether they be general obligation, revenue debt obligations, for these rebate agreements that we talk about in the purple section. We go through that purple section, and we've outlined rebate agreements. And I will remind you, a rebate agreement is simply, you've entered into an agreement, and we'll use this desk as our example. This is bare land, and the developer says, I'm going to build something on top of that bare land, or I'm going to expand something. And at that point in time, whatever is built will pay new taxes. They're not taxes that you've already, you know, getting, you're already getting the land taxes, but they're going to build something over and above that. And that's where you can implement a rebate agreement, and you say, we're going to rebate back a portion of those new taxes to you for a set number of years in an amount not to exceed. And that's how you go about getting some incentives to those developers for different things. We have the Tri-West Development, that is a housing development. That does require what's called LMI, or low to moderate income set aside. The state says if you're going to incentivize housing, that is market rate, which just is normal rates, not subsidized, not low-income housing, things like that, you must set aside, based on the county's LMI rate. And at the time of the agreement, the county's LMI rate was 36.9%. So you're setting aside for every dollar that you give the investor or the developer, you're setting aside 36.9%. We've got a couple of rebate agreements that do not have any tie to housing there on that first page. Then we go to our second page, and when we look at that, again, we have more developments. The first three do not have any LMI, they're commercial or industrial developments. The last one, Prairie Place LLC, which has not started yet. We're a couple of years off from this starting, but that will have LMI with it as well, because that is a housing agreement as well. And why are we a couple of years off from some of these developments? If you've ever built a house, or you've started a new business from, like I said, built a new business, you remember everything, all your taxes are basically 18 to 24 months behind us. So whatever there's a value on, as of January 1st of '25, so coming up this January 1st of '25, the first time that new value will pay taxes is in the fall of '26 and the spring of '27. So even if you're saying, well, there were houses out in, you know, Prairie Place, or we're getting, you know, to that point, it will be another 18 to 24 months before those homes would then pay any taxes, which then means there's no dollars for you to rebate until there's new taxes that are generated. Okay, we go on to our green section. This is where we talk about debt capacity. I'm going to have you look at column number two, if you would, and we're going to read straight down column number two. This is fiscal year '25, the year that we're currently in. The city of Boone has peaked over the $1 billion mark. So your total actual valuation, that's everything 100% assessed, is $1,605,505,000. That generates for you a statutory GO debt limit of $53,025,000. I do want you to look at column number one. This is what we'll call our anomaly year. If you look at column number one's property valuation, it was $863 million. That's a pretty significant jump then, to jump to $1 billion. So I'll have everyone think back, 15, 16, 17 months ago, you all received a letter from your county assessor saying, by the way, you didn't do anything to your home, but we're going to raise your valuation. That was a statewide revaluation. Every single county participated. Your valuation at the bottom of column number one grew by 22.8%. We are seeing anywhere between about 15% and 35% in all these reports in these cities that we've been working with on this. So that's, we'll say, an odd year. We don't anticipate that to happen. We have been told that that happened coming out of the pandemic. Houses were selling very quickly. They were selling at values that were above maybe even asking pricing. And so there was just a statewide revaluation done, and that's what you're seeing because of it. It does increase your debt capacity from column one to column number two by $10 million. That's significant in any future debt borrowings that have to be done with general obligation debt. Going back to column two, and under that $53 million number, so you have $53 million in debt capacity, you have $2.2 million outstanding of general obligation principal. You just have to count the principal, and you're going to pay about $2.1 million in annually appropriated TIF rebate obligations. So we just keep reading down. You will pay back principal of $660,000 this year. And so your remaining debt capacity that is not already obligated is $49,346,000, or about 93%. Again, a pretty healthy number. You and most cities that we work with tell us they do not want to ever issue more than 80% of their total debt capacity, leaving that 20% there as a cushion, as an emergency, the ability to get your hands on money if necessary. If we take that 20% off, that's about $10 million. And that leaves us with a debt capacity after the reserve is taken off of approximately $38,741,000. City has worked very hard through the years to really only borrow for the needs that they have, that are significant needs to the city. And that is being shown right here, that you are very healthy and stable when it comes to your debt capacity. That growth took you up another $10 million. That should give you a little bit more, we'll say, safety and security as you move forward, if there are other projects that are going to come into the council that have to be borrowed for in that general obligation manner. I remind you, revenue debt, so those orange pages, do not figure in here. Revenue debt does not count against your debt capacity, because again, it cannot be paid with property taxes. It has to be paid with the revenues of the system. And then we go on, and we've got a few, I think we've got about eight or 10 pages of blue, so I won't go through all of them. I'll kind of explain the first one and just kind of touch on all the remaining ones. You have different specific TIF districts, and you're paying different debt and obligations with those different TIF districts. We're going to start here with the Southeast District, and we're going to look again at column number two and read straight down. What this report is, or these pages are supposed to show you is that, again, this is our base value. This was our original, this desk is our original TIF area. Anything that's grown over and above in that TIF area, that's what is reflected on these sheets. So we've got about $85 million of commercial growth in the Southeast District, $41 million of industrial growth, and about $1 million of personal property or agricultural. And we have approximately $258 million of growth in residential. So this is your largest TIF district that is outstanding. We take those, all of their rollback, and it generates about $235 million of TIF valuation. We take that times the TIF tax rate of $30.36, and it generates about $7 million, $7.1 million in TIF revenues a year. You are only using $84,000, I'm sorry, for debt service. You're using some for TIF revenue debt as well. The Southeast District is one of the districts that's paying some of that revenue debt, that sewer revenue debt, and then some rebate obligations also come out. You have unclaimed TIF dollars in the Southeast District of $6.5 million. I'm definitely not telling you to go and claim all $6.5 million. That will have a severe impact to your budget, the budgets of the county, and the budget of the school district. You've been asking for your obligations just as the state sent up, that you issue obligations that are to be payable from TIF based on the TIF laws. You're asking for just those TIF rebates, or those TIF dollars to meet those obligations. Any dollar that you do not use, the dollars that are not used, they go back into the valuation of the city, the county, and the district, and that's how you see growth in those numbers every year. So that's how you see growth in your budget, not utilizing all of the TIF dollars that are available to you. We have some other TIF districts, though these, each TIF district gets about two pages. So then the next one is our South Boone. There is a LMI and rebate agreement for the South Boone district. We go on, and then the next two pages back is the West Central District. West Central is also utilizing some TIF receipts for those revenue bonds, those sewer revenue bonds. And then we've got also your North Boone Housing District. That is, I believe, where that Prairie Place development is, so it's not started. So there's really no valuation yet, because there's nothing to show.
North Boone is 22nd and Lynn, the.
Fox Point.
Fox Point.
Perfect.
It's the South Boone that's.
Perfect. Thank you for correcting me. So we just don't have any valuation showing that in that North Boone yet. So we show obligations that, because we anticipate there's going to be obligations out there, just don't have the growth yet to show that that's going to offset. I remind you, in a rebate agreement, you can't rebate back anything to a developer that they haven't produced the revenue on. So although we show a number, we're basically showing a number based on the amount that you will not exceed for giving them, but it truly, the amount that they will receive every year is a finite calculation that Andrea has to do each and every year to say, you've produced this much, you've paid this much in taxes, and this is the amount that we're able to rebate back off of those taxes. So any questions? That's a whole lot of information, but I want to be cognizant of your opinions.
We have a new member. Questions on the.
In Chinese.
I apologize.
As long as there's no quiz, we're okay.
I mean, characterize the fiscal situation of the city of Boone very healthy.
Yeah, very healthy. At this point in time, extremely healthy. Although all of us are probably paying a little bit more taxes on our homes, that revaluation has helped cities across the state gain some debt capacity, which in your case, you didn't really need a whole lot of debt capacity, but we also all know that projects cost a whole lot more. You know, when I started this job, we could do projects, road projects, for $500,000, $600,000. It's very uncommon. There's just not commonality that a road project of, you know, a block and I have two blocks is $100,000 anymore. So when you have to borrow, we want to make sure you have the capacity, and you are in a very healthy position. I'd also mention, if you are near the council, I would be happy to get on a phone call sometime and walk through this with you or with you and Andrea. Andrea has always explained this, but honestly, it is a whole lot of information. But our goal is that you all know the information as a councilperson, so that if people ask you, you are, you're being kept informed on an annual basis. The reason I'll remind everybody that we do this in the November timeframe or this fall timeframe, is that by December 1st, Andrea's office has to provide a debt certification to the county, and that is due by December 1st. And so what we're trying to help her with TIF is just to kind of, like, it's a conversation between her and I to make sure that we're all on the same page. These are the obligations outstanding. These are the ways that you're repaying it. It's just a double check of everybody, so.
I think, can I summarize? It sounds like we're doing a real good job.
You're doing a great job. You're doing just fine. So, yeah. Thank you for having me this evening. Yeah, have a good evening, everyone.
Okay, next item, B, update on the Boone County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Chris.
I have some charts here for you. Terrell and I often pass it around. So if you guys had seen on the news here recently, we were recognized for the tourism dollars. State Tourism Office just came out with the new dollars, and it was up 5%. So state tourism brought in $7.3 billion in visitor spending. Out of that, I put into a pipe chart for you guys to see the spending in just Boone County. So these numbers and everything comes from a collection agency that the State Tourism Office hires, the Tourism Agency, and that is 2023 data. That's the latest data that we have. So we were lucky enough to have Roger Riley come and do a segment and talk about the tourism spending, and Boone County was recognized for that. Last time I was in to talk to you guys, told you about a new project that we're working on with the Ames Economic Development Chamber Office Alliance, as well as Discover Ames, and that was the RV there yet. We did do the filming for that, and that'll be shown in April sometime. So we're excited about that. Patrice and Kevin, we're excited that encompassed them staying out at the ledge of State Park the first week in October. As you can imagine, it was beautiful out there at that time. And then they hiked out there, had a great conversation with Andy Bartlett, the park manager, so he'll be part of the segment. Then they went down, rode their bikes at the Tresco Trail. Then came Road, the Rail Explorers. So the owners from Rail Explorers flew in from Rhode Island, spent the day with them as well, and told their story about how they ended up in Boone. So we're excited about that, and should be a big punch for Boone County.
Is that like 30 minutes, the program?
It is. It's a 30-minute, yep. And then commercials, I think they said it'd be like a 22-minute episode.
Well, we have a heads up before.
We will.
That we know.
Yeah, I think they originally told me they're thinking the third weekend, April. And so they tried to sell, I think, 14 different episodes. They typically, the last couple of years, have only sold about 11. So they're thinking that we might even be an episode that runs twice. So we'd be okay with that. Then the snowball effect of that, Iowa Public Television was here just a couple of weeks ago, and they're doing a segment on travel in Iowa, Iowa road trips. So they made a stop out at Seven Oaks, as well as the ledge of State Park, Rail Explorers, and the Boone and Seamy Valley Row. So getting tons of coverage, and to just continue that. You probably noticed out at Highway 30 and Story, the billboard, we just rewrapped, so got a fresh look to that. Old Boone was getting a little faded, so excited to have that rewrapped. One of our latest projects is a new tear-off map. So that's a goal that we have established last year, that we wanted to get in the hands of our hoteliers, as well as some of our businesses. And so the tear-off map has been extremely popular since we've put those out about a month ago, and people are really liking them, as well as, you know, our hoteliers love them. So they, and that's also been a bullevar, is how do we connect our businesses with our attractions, and our attractions with our businesses, and what they like. That will, that will really help. So without further ado, I brought a friend of mine from DMAC, and we happen to have an announcement that is kind of exciting for Boone and DMAC. I would say that DMAC's probably one of the underrated attractions in Boone County. If you guys haven't been to DMAC, their athletic programs are just unbelievable. You know, their men's and women's basketball have both done amazing the last few years. Cross country's ranked very high and doing well, so BJ was sharing the news.
Very good. Thank you for having me. Thanks for letting me come say hi to you guys. How are you doing?
This person is wonderful.
Yeah. I'm relaxing here.
Chair right here.
No, no. But that being said, so probably about last April, so I'm on the National Women's Golf Committee. First of all, this is pretty wide. BJ McGinn, Director of Athletics, DMAC. Also serving as the Inter Campus Dean for Boone since July. So they're getting everybody's worth right now out of me. But that being said, so I got on the National Women's Golf Committee, right? So volunteered, I keep doing that stuff. I don't know what I'm doing half the time. In any event, so I fly out to Charlotte. Up until this, come 24, 25, there'd only been scholarship and non-scholarship women's golf, right? So it was just Division One, Division Three. Everything else we have, we have Division Two, right? And on the men's side, they did as well. Well, the women have grown from 45 teams to 90 in the country. And so it makes sense to, let's get a Division Two Women's Golf going nationally, right? So we were able to get that through at the committee level in April. And then after we get that established, well, we have to have a site to play this thing in May of '25. So I'm like, okay, so naturally, I volunteered to take that on, right? So we get back, and we're kicking some things around, myself and our head golf coach, Chris Seabock. And we thought to ourselves, what if we did it in Boone? So I called up Councilman Henson here, and I said, hey, do you think we can make that happen? He's like, heck, yeah. And so in any event, we kind of put together the proposal. We ended up getting the 2025 National Women's Division Two Golf Meet. It will be played at Cedar Point here in Boone, Iowa. So we're talking 15 teams and six, so there's 90 women, plus 15 to 20 additional at large. So you're bringing in 105, say they bring four guests, which is a big deal. You go in this national tournament, I would say there'd be more than that. So that's going to be coming to your community. It is May 12th through, I believe, May 16th. Dates are locked in at Cedar Point. Chris is going to be our point person on, like all the community relations and a lot of those type of things as we get this thing going. Working with Corey, a superintendent at Cedar Point. We're ready to roll there, and he's got more help now, it's my understanding. So we're going to be ready to go back. And then our golf coach, Chris Seabock, will be my NJCAA point person. So I'll kind of be the umbrella liaison for all three of that. That's our team that we put together for this thing. So we're excited about it. We're going to have to probably get together and talk about logistics at some point. But that being said, I just want to make you guys free to it. We signed the contract a week and a half ago. So I'm just waiting for, so National Office, they do it at Wood. For all national championships, right? So we're in the process to just get some quotes and things done. We should have that this week, so that'll get going out nationally, really. It's going to be all over the country. They're going to have people in Boone, Iowa. So get the rail explorers.
Right.
So, but it'll be a great opportunity to showcase what y'all have, what y'all do. So we're excited to bring that to the community, so.
Good job.
Thank you.
Any questions? If not, I'll let you guys finish the meeting. It's May 12th to 16th, yeah, so it's about, yeah, 25th, May 25th. So, but, but yeah, it's going to be exciting. We're excited to bring that here. I believe this is the first time there's ever been a collegiate national event in this county. So I was kind of excited to bring that in here and showcase what we do.
Super cool. The DMAC again is underrated, and BJ's working hard and doing great things, and more great things to come. I think that's just a taste of what a rec center could do for the community. I think, you know, those youth sports are a big thing, and even at the collegiate level. So we're super excited, so keep you updated on that, and any questions for Maggie?
Questions? Congratulations. This is a great report, and a lot of great stuff that you guys are doing to bring people to Boone County and Boone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. C, update on downtown Boone. Kelly Moller.
Hi, everyone. This will probably be the last time you get to hear from me. I'm sure this appoints you, because we hired an executive director for Main Street Iowa. Want you to welcome Polly Stecker. A lot of you know her already, but we are happy now to fulfill that slot. We're excited for all the things that she's going to do for Main Street, all the things we've been talking about for the last three years that we want to do. Now we have a point person who's going to be able to execute all of my dreams and visions. So we are really excited to have her. She will be here more often as, you know, need be, but she will definitely be here quarterly to give you updates on what Main Street's doing, kind of what our project list is. We have a strategy session on November 7th. So Andrea's coming, Ely's coming, Lisa's coming. A bunch of us from the board will be there. Really going to hash out kind of our strategic plan and what, going forward, like our targeted goals, kind of higher level stuff is going to be. We did, after the September visit with Main Street Iowa, we have wordsmithed and crafted our mission statement, so I want to share that with you tonight. Our mission statement is, downtown Boone is committed to creating a vibrant downtown community through business growth, historic preservation, and collaborative partnerships. So that's really where our focus is going to be, so we're excited about that. Let's see, during that training session, we're going to do Main Street America's Transformational Strategies, but really, it's the goal. So probably in January, I'm guessing, after we have some board votes and things, we'll bring to you what our goals for the year, for the next kind of five years are going to be, so that you kind of know what our projects, our thoughts are going to be. But don't worry, we understand the process, right? Like, we'll have an idea, we will get your blessing for said idea, raise funds. but don't worry, we understand the process, right? Like, we will have an idea. We will get your blessing for said idea, raise funds, and then execute that idea. Um, let's see, on November seventh, Polly has another old lady training that she will go to. This one's for new, uh, Main Street Iowa directors. So she'll get to meet all of the new directors and really get the onboarding, and here's all you need to know. And it was her first day, so I've been knowledge jumping three years' worth of Main Street Iowa things into, into her brain. Um, we had a shops on story meeting before this, so she's, she's had a full day today. Um, and then if you hadn't noticed, my shirt. So Dan Myers, um, is a screen printer, and he's got a studio at the Hive. And so, um, a shout out to him. He does lots of great Boone things, um, inspired shirts, something about maybe, um, so if you had to read it twice, I had to read it twice. And I was like, oh, that's funny. I get that. I need that shirt. Um, so that's, oh, three grades is the other thing. I, um, if you remember, we planted our trees, and our phase two is going to be our three grades to get rid of the mulch around those. Um, I met with Jim Fitzgerald, who's a fabrication teacher, uh, at the high school. And him and I are really going to work together to have the students design and, uh, fabricate these grades. So that's really exciting. He's really excited to get the students this opportunity to really kind of, you know, go through the process of a working with what would be a potential client, um, and also having a lot of design freedoms, so that they have a lot of ownership in this project. Um, I think we talked about, at least in the main street circle, about how ownership and things in downtown is so super important, right? We get these kids to own their stuff, and now they're bringing their parents, they're bringing their grandparents, they're coming back with their kids to be like, do this thing, like I did this, this is fine. So, um, we're really excited about that. They start second semester, and so hopefully by the end of second semester, we'll have products to be putting around. So, we're excited. We'll keep you posted, send you pictures and stuff when we get those and know what the designs are going to be. So. Anybody have any questions for me?
Questions?
Thank you so much for your work, guys.
Okay, D, set up a public hearing for November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M for the consideration to amend the city of Boone, Iowa precinct boundaries.
The move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Thirty-two ninety-two, resolution fixing date of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at six P M for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with Hanson's and Gardner LLC.
So move.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Item four, public comment for items not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none. Uh, item five, reports of standing committees. A, Policy Administration, Employee Relations, Williamson.
No report.
B, Public Safety, Transportation, Helsbeck's not here. Uh, C, Utility Committee, Anstrom.
Uh, we just have one thing today. Review and updated cost changes for the water and wastewater resorts. I'm going to kind of hand this over to Perry to give us the update.
Okay, everyone. I just wanted to kind of give you an update on where the report is. Um, this is the workshop that we had, uh, a while back. Uh, we have actually updated the report to reduce our fees down to twelve percent, um, or they were previously. The report has now been submitted to the V N R as of last week, so they are actually reviewing it. Um, excuse me. And also, uh, we have just this past week received some, uh, new numbers from the industry, um, which will hopefully give us a, a positive impact on the costs, uh, going forward. And by the end of this week, we're going to again revise that report, um, with the new costs and so forth, and get that back into the V N R. So, uh, hopefully by the end of this week or early next week. And I can give you all the newest person.
Yeah, just a reminder to the elected officials and people, uh, listening out there. All these improvements that we're doing, if you remember when council ordered these studies to be done, they're twenty-year studies out. And the reason you all did that is because this Daisy obviously is a big part of this, right? But it's not the only thing. It's not the sole reason we're doing this. We're doing it as well for twenty years out, what this community is going to look like in twelve year, or excuse me, twenty years. And what are our needs for wastewater, and what are our needs for water? Uh, so just a reminder, buddy, that Daisy's a big part of, but it's not the only thing. And example of that is out at wastewater, excuse me, in our press building. There are belts out there that do the press. Well, those are run their course, and they're running out. Because of what we're looking for in twenty, in twenty years, we're changing the way that we press the sludge, I think that's the correct way to say it, Perry, out there with a different system. Well, that different system isn't just for Daisy, it's for the entire community. And when that would go, and these were things that we had already on the radar that we were going to have to replace. So again, it's for the entire community, and, uh, will change the way we press because as we move forward in the next twenty years, it'll be more efficient for the city in operations and things like that. So I thought it was important just to mention that it, this is for the whole city and, uh, twenty years in the future. Thanks, Per. That's all I have.
That's it.
Thank you. Uh, D, Economic Development Committee, Mormon?
Um, Andre, just inform me tonight that the, uh, one of our BDF requests is done, and we have a couple of requests for downtown incentive grants, and that will probably be sometime next week, just to give you a heads up on the E D committee. Okay, not this week, next week.
I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, number six, Department Reports. A Building Official, Dave. Attorney Jim.
No, report, Your Honor.
Uh, D, Director of Public Works, Wayland. Uh, D, Library James not with us tonight. E, Park Director, Mike is not with us tonight. Uh, F, Recreation Director, Nate. G, Engineer?
I'll take it.
How's it back to Administrator Scare?
Thank you. So this is a change order. So this is a combination of, of, it's an eight hundred and forty-six dollar change order. Uh, it's really two projects. One is the SCADA project with this company did, um, and changing all our communications out there so that we can communicate with the water towers, et cetera. And, uh, US Water did a good job of making some changes out there, so make this easier. This change order, um, to do with, if, Ability Committee remembers when we talked about the T D H Ms that needed to be lack of a burn order fix, fixed out at the water plant, we added an additional system. Well, this change order is actually for a, a piece of equipment for that, but it's the same company, so that's the reason why. So, uh, eight forty-six, uh, my recommendation is that we approve this change order. Move to approve.
Second.
Special questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
H?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Anything further?
No, sir. Thanks.
Uh, H, Public Safety, one chief at us.
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, just as everybody probably saw, we released the county life birthday in after, uh, some rain. And now it seems like it, uh, speaking won't, uh, quit, but that's all right. We need quite a bit of it. Uh, so the regular burn ordinance goes through the fif- the fifteenth of November from eight A M to five P M. And I just wanted to let everybody be aware of that. So, that runs through the fifteenth of this month. So.
Two, Chief Weebel?
No report, Your Honor.
Okay. Uh, I, Assistant City Administrator, Andrea.
Oh, yeah, um, in your packet, there is a R F Q for a grant administrator. We're just trying to get ahead of, uh, all the water and wastewater projects by, uh, hiring a grant administrator to do the C D B G. Uh, to do a C D B G grant, we have to first do a survey, um, for L M I qualifications, um, for the citywide, uh, projects. Um, to do that, we need to, um, first of all, uh, send off the R F Q to a couple of different companies, um, and request proposals. I have that, um, with the deadline of November twenty-sixth. Um, and then secondly, um, which will be the second vote is to, uh, appoint a selection committee. Um, so the first one is to just approve this R F Q, and when you approve the R F Q, you are also approving the criteria of how we're going to evaluate the, the, um, companies that put in a proposal. So on the second page, um, we have it set so that, uh, you get thirty points based on your experience with the C date, C D B G program. Uh, thirty points for previous work performance, twenty points for capacity to complete the scope of work, and then twenty points for the cost proposal that they put together. Um, and we have to meet a fifty-one percent L M I qualification of that survey in order to qualify for C D B G. Is there any questions on that? If I can.
To approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And then, um, just mention, uh, the next part of this is that we need to appoint a, uh, selection committee. Um, that selection committee, um, will hopefully be able to meet on the twenty-sixth in the afternoon. Um, or the morning of the twenty-seventh would work also, uh, to go through the proposals and to create a recommendation to take to the council, the following council meeting on December second. Um, I would recommend that we appoint the Utility Committee, which, um, consists of Instrom, Mormon, and Bird. Is there any opposition to those three, um, not being able to make it?
We can do it the twenty-seventh. That'd be a pretty.
Twenty-seventh? The morning is okay? Okay. What do you mean?
Bird?
I think that's fine, yeah.
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Bird?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Sorry, Mormon?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Uh, the only other, uh, thing to mention is, for those that are in the C I P committee, we meet Wednesday at nine A M here in the council chambers. Uh, that would also be Mormon, Bird, and Jim, purpose. If I have.
Uh, what, what, I'm sorry, what time on the twenty-seventh?
Uh, we dance at a time.
Okay.
So if you have something, I can, I can work with you, um,
Yeah, perfect.
At another time.
It's in the morning.
In the morning.
Yeah.
Perfect. J, City Administrator, uh.
Thank you, sir. In the packet, uh, is the contract for the Main Street program between the Main Street and the city. If you remember at the last council meeting, we discussed, um, this contract and it, over the last two weeks, staff and some elected officials have been working on this contract, uh, to be approved tonight. Uh, now would be the time if there's any discussion on this contract. And I'll answer any questions you have. Um, if you're all good with it, I know you've looked at it. It's in the packet, uh, and I'd ask for a a motion to approve of Resolution three-two-nine-three.
Second.
Any questions on anything in there?
The funds were already established, right?
Yeah, that was already.
Yeah, we've already said that.
That part is being formalized.
Yeah, the major change, if I could add, Mayor, is, uh, the, uh, this, this contract has in it that the city will have a vote on the board.
The representation.
Yes, and that's at the recommendation of our city attorney.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Yes? Please call the roll.
Hanson?
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
The only other thing I have is a reminder to the elected officials that, uh, on November twelfth at nine-thirty will be the ribbon cutting, uh, for the Veterans Project down there on Sixth Street. I don't know if you've been by, but, uh, there's fence that's completely around the building. Wayland, did they start anything today? Do you know?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Okay, but that ribbon cutting is on the twelfth at nine-thirty.
So I have, sure.
Thank you. Number seven, Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a request is made prior to the time council votes on the motion. Hope to approach. Second. Okay, please call the roll.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Lingus?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Right, uh, item eight, ordinances. A, Second Reading Ordinance twenty-three thirteen to allow the city of Boone, Iowa to change the deer regulations. The Code of Ordnances to Prohibit Feeding Deer, Chapter Fifty-Five amended, amended by adding section fifty-five, eight-three-zero.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mormon?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly?
Yes.
For nine, uh, Mayor's Comments. Uh, just want to remind everybody that on, uh, November twenty-first at seven P M, we will have a public information session, uh, where we'll also take feedback from the public on what to think about for, uh, goals for the coming fiscal year. So we'll update everybody on what's been going on, how everything fits together, and where we're going from here. And that's all I have. Number ten, Councilmember comments.
Just want to remind everybody that we have the light parade and tree lighting on December fifth. It'll start at five-thirty. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Just maybe look into extending the burn ban, the days it was closed.
We'd have a discussion on that, uh, can.
Coming forward.
That on the agenda, can it be moved on?
Yeah, it's actually, I mean, it's.
Yeah. It's on the agenda earlier.
Yep, that's every point.
So, yeah, I'll open up for a discussion on extension of the burn ban.
That meeting.
Uh, we do that in this meeting, since it's the agenda. Yeah, that's what council wants to be.
I just can't remember exactly the date. Or that seems.
Go to the thirtieth.
That seems a fair assessment to extend it that long.
Yeah. I think it's going to, what I've seen for weather, I think the weather is going to be nice for the next few weeks here, all the way through December. So it dries out enough to where people can burn, so, and not be absolutely terribly smoky.
Yeah, thirtieth is reasonable.
Yeah, I make a motion to move it to the thirtieth.
Okay.
Uh, not, no, not before, not after Thanksgiving, not through the holiday.
That's two days.
I understand that.
For the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, I'd go for that.
Do I need to remove my motion? I'll retract my motion, and then my new motion will be to the twenty-seventh.
Second.
Quarter dollar roll, I just, I can't vote, but, uh, I'm adamant against, uh, extending the burning ban, um, uh, and even having in the first place, I think it's, you know, the amount of carcinogens that it produces and air quality and things like that. It's just not a good deal for a lot of folks. That's why I'm on the record. But again, I don't get a vote. That's for you all to decide any other discussion. Please call the roll.
Williamson?
Yes.
Instrom?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Koho Ho Kelly?
No.
Mormon?
Yes.
I think that's all I have. Other councilmember comments?